I'd like to call the November 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to announce that if you need parking validation, if you parked in the county's parking deck, or if you use transit, Asheville Transit, to attend this meeting, you can get validation for your parking or transit from one of the deputies that is with us this evening. You can see them on the way out. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board this evening? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. All right, we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Are there any questions from any members of the public about any items on the consent agenda? Commissioners, I'd like to request that we amend our agenda in just one small way, which is that when we come to the appointment of boards and commissions, we interviewed applicants for the Ad Hoc Reappraisal Committee earlier today, and there's interest in the commission in adding one additional at-large position to that subcommittee. So when we get to that, I'd like to request that we approve a resolution, an amendment to our resolution creating the subcommittee to add one additional at-large position. And then if that's approved, when we appoint the positions, we'll appoint one additional person. So if there's no objection to that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as published with the inclusion of the amendment to the Ad Hoc Reappraisal Committee?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We now come to public comment. Let me read the policies around the public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three members. If your time expires, you can leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during the public comment period. This is the chance for the public to speak to the Board. And just let us know, if you want to speak, just let us know your name and where you live. And you'll get an orange light when you've got 30 seconds left, and then a red light when your time's up. We do ask, when your time's up, to please discontinue your public comments because we want to give everyone the same amount of time to speak during public comment. We did have a couple of folks sign up, so we'll go through that list. First person that signed up is Carrie Smith. Is Carrie here? All right, great. Come on up to the podium, please.
Will we take our masks down?
That's fine. If you're at the podium, if you want to take your mask off while you're speaking at the podium, that's okay, but please put it back on when you leave.
Thank you. Okay, ready when you are.
Sure, go ahead.
Do we start now?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. My name is Carrie Smith, and I'm speaking on behalf of the group Save Oakley Library, my community, friends, neighbors, and most importantly, my children. There are a multitude of reasons why the Oakley Library should not close, which is stated in the master plan proposal, and why our neighborhood is in despair over this happening. The Oakley Library is located directly on a bus line, with a bus stop steps from the front door, compared to riding a bus from South Library, which can take up to a half an hour on a bus and seven-minute walk up Overlook Drive without any sidewalks. Haw Creek East can take over an hour one-way on a bus from Shiloh. Shiloh and Oakley residents have more bus riders than Haw Creek and Biltmore, which can turn our community into an equity desert if this library closes. The library has safe sidewalks and crosswalks that lead from most of our neighborhood to the front door. There is a sidewalk that leads from Oakley Elementary right to the library. Oakley Elementary is one of the most diverse schools in Buncombe County, with a high number of ESL students in this library in Buncombe County. With this library is so beneficial to the students and teachers, to have an educational resource so close. The list goes on and on, but the most important reason for me personally not to close the library is that it is a free, safe place that I can bring my family. In the month of October alone, there has been two murders right down the road from me in a place where I take my children fishing. There has also been a major drug bust in our neighborhood by two men who have also been charged with murder. I can honestly say that I have never seen or spoken to a police officer on foot in our neighborhood, but I have, on many occasions, talked to the firefighters stationed in the same building as the library. I can also say when I had to call 911 twice when my newborn daughter stopped breathing, both times the firefighters were there faster than anyone else and saved her life, both times. Having first responders in the same building as the library helps keep it a safe place. Located next to the library is Insight Women's Recovery Center. The women in recovery use the library to search for jobs, for building a successful life outside of treatment. They also have supervised visits with their children for a moment of normalcy because the library is a safe place. Blue West Opportunities support and houses individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The staff at Blue West walk residents to the library to use the computers, browse books, and maximize their potential as part of the community that they live in because this is a safe place for them to thrive. There is a crosswalk directly from Oakley Elementary to the Oakley Market, where there is gambling, alcohol, tobacco sales, and you can literally buy a crack pipe as soon as you walk through the front door.
Hey Carrie, Carrie, your time's up, but thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
And speaking to the Board. All right, the next person that signed up is Lance Jones.
Hi. This is my first time at one of these meetings, so give this a shot. I'm representing a group of paramedics. It's not just me. There's about eight or 10 of us here.
Okay, and so are you asking for extra time?
Yes.
Okay, could I see the hands of the folks who are going to give up their time? Keep them up for just a second, please. Okay, I see six. I think our policy is we need eight folks to give up their time in order to get extra time. Okay. I'm not trying to give anybody a hard time. I just want us to follow our policies. So are there more? Okay, I trust you. And so for the folks who give up their time, just to be clear, Lance will speak, but you're giving him your time for a public comment, okay? All right, please proceed.
Thank you. Again, I'm paramedic Lance Jones, proudly serving Buncombe County EMS. Imagine for a moment the worst moment of your life. You've called 911 because the person you love most is lying on the floor, unresponsive. You have no idea what's happening. Are they breathing? Do they have a pulse? Do you even know how to check for these things? Hopefully, an ambulance will show up soon to begin advanced life support. What you don't realize is that due to increased call volume, an ambulance may not show up in time. It may not show up quickly enough. The fire department will be there, thankfully, to make up that time a bit, but in the end, you need a transport unit to get you, your loved ones, your kids to the ER. That being said, currently, that is a reality. It's not just a hypothetical. It's a reality. For about 40% of the time, because of this, we are averaging about 18 minutes from dispatch to arrival on scene, when response times should be less than half of that. It affects our community members, as you've already heard. Call volume for 911 is far beyond the means of our current EMS system. Population growth, failure of the current healthcare system, and most recently, the local fallout of a worldwide pandemic have all contributed to an increase in 911 calls. In just the past five years, call volume is up 15%, with EMS answering an additional 4,000-plus calls yearly. All the while doing so with at least one truck out of service an average of 65% of the time, this translates into physical and emotional exhaustion, burnout, and possible loss of life for both medics and patients. For years, those of us in the field have pleaded with management for more ambulances and the staff to keep them up and operational, but our input feels to have gone unheard. Buncombe County EMS needs to be the competitive employer it once was with sustainable, long-term solutions. Our agency is long overdue for an increase in coverage, thereby reducing overall call volume and the stress that it puts on our staff and our community. We are here today to support the parts of the proposal that you're voting on today, to fund more transport units, personnel to staff those units, and operators to build calls for the 911 system so that we can better serve the county with emergency medical care. This, along with an overall pay increase across the Board, will serve to attract potential candidates that are seeking employment with other agencies that are nearby that have comparable compensation with much less stress. After a 24-hour shift, medics need time to rest, recover, and spend time with loved ones in order to be mentally and physically able to return to work two days later. Incentivizing extra shifts with more pay for overtime by an already exhausted workforce is not a viable solution and will be detrimental to staffing both the short and long term. The same can already be seen in the 911 dispatch system where this practice is already in place. These are my coworkers, and these are my kids over here. Look at these people. These are the people that are taking care of you, your friends, your family. The skills that they have learned, the knowledge they've acquired, the equipment they've mastered, all of this stems from a passion that we all share to help the sick, the injured, and to save lives. They want to serve their community to the best of their ability. We all want to help. We are now asking for your help. Please consider us as people with families that want to make it home without wrecking our cars on the way due to exhaustion after a shift. Please remember that we also have physical and mental health issues, and we're struggling. Remember your respective communities that you represent. Everyone in this county and our guests deserve the absolute best of all of us in this room, in the 911 center and in the field. Approving additional ambulances and staff to be hired is a great start, and we appreciate it, but we also need people to apply for those positions. Remember these things over the next few months as you discuss budgets and compensation for emergency services. Collectively, we support proposals that will increase our number of dispatchers with adequate training in the 911 center and staffed ambulances in the field, while also keeping our safety, physical, and mental health in mind. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your continued service to our communities. This was put together by myself, paramedic Tipton Gentry, and paramedic Amanda Fox, presented by me, Lance Jones. Thank you again.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you to everyone who attended. Took time to come out this evening and share your perspectives on these important issues, and thank you all for your service. We deeply appreciate it. All right, the next person that signed up is Shannon Watkins.
Okay, I just want to finish the statement from Carrie Smith, my friend and fellow Save Oakley Library person. She wanted to finish and say that the store in Oakley is very dangerous. The market draws people who buy and use products all day, at night, and loiter and walk through Oakley. This is not a safe place. A safe place for our community is the Oakley Library because it is a gun-free, drug-free, and alcohol-free place with loving librarians, free bathrooms, drinking water, safety from the weather, and occasionally a hello from the firefighters who share the same walls. She has raised her children in the library because it is a free, safe place to grow the hearts and minds, a place they have met lifelong friends and met neighbors. This is a second home to our family. We have been going to Mother Goose Storytime weekly since her five-year-old was an infant. Please help us keep the Oakley Library in the heart of our community. Just a little about me. I'm a Realtor for the last eight years, full-time. I'm a graduate of UNC Asheville. My grandmother lived in Oakley, so I'm kind of a lifelong resident of Asheville. I serve on the Historic Resources Commission for the city and the county, as well as a couple other groups. I feel like our library is super important to the community. We need more libraries, not less libraries, although I understand what they want to do and combine some libraries where it makes sense. But to completely close the Oakley Library would cause a huge hardship for our community because it's growing already so much, and we may be getting the homeless shelter at the Ramada Hotel, and I'm sure those people could use the services of the library as well. Equity and inclusion for the county does not mean closing libraries. It means opening more libraries. Buncombe County has received 50.7 million in ARPA funding, so we would love to see the library renovated or possibly purchased from the city and then renovated because the city of Asheville owns the building, and the library is very dated. So that's a problem for many of the people. But it is a key location, as Carrie mentioned, for school. Right across the street, the bus stop steps away, the community center just below the library. As Chairman Newman said at one point regarding the ARPA funding, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So I would just like to read a couple of the services that the library provides. Some of the things that you may not know about is that you can actually borrow a computer from the library and use the Internet for free while at the library. They also have desktop computers that patrons can use, Wi-Fi for your telephones and things of that nature. And our library is incredibly important to our diverse community. Residents of Oakley speak a wider range of language than any other school in the system, as Carrie mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Shannon. We appreciate you taking time to come talk to us about the Oakley Library.
Thank you.
All right, that's everyone who signed up. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak during public comment? All right. Thank you again. Okay, next up, under Presentations, we've got a presentation from the Audit Committee, and Kendra Ferguson, the chair, I think is going to present the presentation. Thank you for being here.
Not quite sure how my presentation is.
It will, it has already come up. And if you can, and you can probably get it to advance too, that is not always completely easy.
Thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to present to the Commissioners the work of the Audit Committee. I wanted to talk briefly about the purpose of the Audit Committee. Our purpose is to assist the Board of Commissioners in fulfilling your oversight duties as it relates to the financial reporting process, management systems of internal controls, and the performance of both internal and external audit functions. There are currently seven members on our committee. I, Kendra Ferguson, am a CPA and serve as the Chair of the Committee. I've been a member for several years. We also have Commissioners Al Whitesides and Robert Presley, and Commissioner Whitesides serves as our Vice Chair. We have two other members of the community that are also CPAs, Larry Harris and Denny Yelton. Mike Knupshild is a member of the banking community, and Dr. Glenda Weiner is a small business owner in our community and also a professor of accounting. So we have a wide range of experience on our committee. I wanted to go over briefly the most recent meetings that we've had and some of the accomplishments that we did, that we accomplished at those meetings. Back in December of 2020, we approved the business plan for the Internal Audit Department, which also aligned with the Buncombe County Strategic Plan. We also approved our 2021 meeting dates and elected officers to serve for 2021. We continued our discussion of governance documents, which initiated several months ago, and we always have internal audit department updates at our meetings. In January of this year, we reviewed and approved the fiscal year 2022 budget proposal for the Internal Audit Department, which then went through the typical budget process for all other departments within the county. We also received an update on the external audit and continued our discussion of the governance documents and received another update from the Internal Audit Department. Back in March, we had a meeting to approve the recommended fiscal year 2020 external audit, which then came to the Board of Commissioners for acceptance, and we approved the fiscal year 2021 external audit contract with CLA. Finally, we approved an Audit Committee Charter, bylaws, and internal audit charter, and those were not new documents. They were updated. And again, we had additional internal audit department updates. In June of this year, we had a meeting where we actually, we were going to be recruiting for a new internal audit director, who we lost effective July 1st of this year. And so the committee approved the Internal Audit Subcommittee, which is made up of myself, Commissioners Whitesides, and Commissioner Presley, to serve as a personnel committee to work to recruit for our internal audit director. And we received additional internal audit department updates. We also met back in August to receive updates on the 2021 external audit plan and had additional internal audit department updates and updates on the recruitment process for the director. There are a number of recent successes that the Internal Audit Department has achieved in the last few months. There has been an increased number of employee ethics report line cases, and I know that might sound counterintuitive, but the evidence that employees are willing to come forth and make complaints demonstrates confidence in their process, or in the process, which is an anonymous process. The Internal Audit Department has also worked to implement audit management software, which is ongoing, and hopefully will be, the first component of that will be completed very soon. There's an additional data analytics component which will be implemented at a later date. The Internal Audit Department also serves on various county workgroups in an advisory capacity, which to me is evidence that the Internal Audit Department is seen as a valued partner to many other members of management. And additionally, Internal Audit conducts training for other departments. Recent training, trainings that have happened quite a few over the last few months has been in relation to COSO's Internal Control Integrated Framework, which is something that ABOB approved the implementation of several years ago. We unfortunately do have some challenges. So we are currently recruiting for a new internal audit director. That position has been open since the beginning of July of this year. We have been unable to approve a comprehensive risk assessment and audit plan for fiscal year 2021 due to the turnover of that director position. We were supposed to do that kind of right before the previous director left the county. And truly, there is a lack of resources within the Internal Audit Department. I'm saddened to actually provide a further update versus what's on the slide. We currently will be losing our one staff person in the Internal Audit Department within the next couple of weeks. She has accepted another position within the county, and that is going to significantly hinder the progress of the Internal Audit Department. Before that, we have not had the capacity to complete audits. We have not, the Internal Audit Department has not completed an audit since Sheriff Duncan was in office a couple of years ago. And we don't have the current expertise within the Internal Audit Department to assess risk and audit information technology functions. I wanted to provide some benchmarking information in relation to other North Carolina local governments and their internal audit departments. So as you can see on the list, Buncombe County and the city of Asheville are down at the bottom. We do have three approved positions for the Internal Audit Department, but as I mentioned, we currently will have two vacancies, and one of those positions has not yet been advertised, and unfortunately, will not be able to be advertised until we can locate a director. I also put together this slide to show the resources that have been allocated to the Internal Audit Department. This is within the general government function of the General Fund for the fiscal year 2022 amended budget, as it stood on the 24th of October. You can see information technology down at the bottom is by far the largest department within that fund. An internal audit is at the very top, meaning that it is the least funded department within that function. I wanted to talk a little bit further. I actually gained some additional information about investigations, which has been a significant component of the work of the Internal Audit Department over the last several months, or really a couple of years. In fiscal year 2021, the Internal Audit Department completed 54 investigations. Forty-seven of those originated from the third-party hotline, and seven of those were directly reported to the Internal Audit Department. So far, in fiscal year 2022, there have been 15 investigations, all of which have come through to the third-party hotline. Now, that may sound like a lot of cases, but a lot of those have actually been related to one particular similar issue. In fiscal year 2021, 25 of those were related to one particular issue. And so far in 2022, seven are also related to that same issue. It is a particular concern of mine, losing our one internal audit department staff, to lose the independence associated with the investigations that are currently being performed. From my understanding, in the meantime, since our staff auditor is just moving to another county department, she will continue to assist with investigations. But the perceived potential for conflict and for management to have a say in investigations is a particular concern of mine, and is something that we really need to have in mind as we are working to recruit an internal audit director. So of course, our highest priority is to recruit an internal audit director. We have mentioned the potential of hiring a search firm to assist us with that, so we'll be in discussion soon to talk about that process. We also will be meeting next week to go over and recommend the fiscal year 2023 Internal Audit Department budget. It's a little bit earlier this year since the timelines for all the county departments are kind of pushed up a little bit. We also soon will hopefully be reviewing and recommending the fiscal year 2021 external audit to the Board. There's been some delays caused by the federal government that has delayed the external financial audit due to all of the additional COVID funds that have been received. The federal government hasn't quite told our auditors how to audit those funds yet, so we're still waiting for information to come out from the federal government before our external auditors can actually complete their external audit. I'm not sure if Don has an update on that, but last I heard is we're just still waiting, so there will be hopefully an update on that soon. We also will soon be requesting approval of revised governance documents, which will come before you. You will have to approve the Audit Committee Charter and Internal Audit Charter, which will be revised from their current forms. That's all that I had.
All right, Kendra, thank you so much for the presentation. Commissioners, are there any questions? Or Commissioners Presley or Whitesides, do you have any additional thoughts you'd like to share with us from the Audit Committee?
What I would like to share, first of all, is to thank Kendra for a job well done. From what we've gone through this past year, I don't know what we could have done without her because I know she's starting her new business, which is off and running out here, doing well. But still, we can count on her to back us up, and she's done a good job with that. But saying that, we've got to move with lightning speed, I hope. We've got to hire an internal auditor, and then we need a staff auditor. And we've got to replace Kelly. So our work is cut out for us, and hopefully, we can get that with admirable support. We'll get that done.
Thank you, Al.
Yeah, and again, thank you, Kendra, for everything you've done and will continue to do, I hope. Because myself, you, and Al have really been put under a lot of pressure here the last six months and trying to figure out what we can do. But Kelly has took on a large role, you know, the last couple of years with some internal things we had going on and trying to get it. And now we're setting at a point that myself and Al and Kendra have talked with the county manager. We have got to get someone in this position. It's a high risk. Get them, but also, we've got software coming, and we've got the opportunity, an opening for employees, but it's hard to hire them until we get someone in as the director of it. So Kendra- So Kendra, I know it's going to be hard on us, but we really want you to really think about staying. Because I know we've all talked about jumping ship here, but this ain't the time to do it.
The time commitment has certainly been significant.
Right. But I want the other commissioners to know that we have put a lot in and probably hadn't kept y'all up to date the way we need to. But this is something we need to be looking at very hard in the next 60 days. So thank you again, Kendra, you've done amazing work.
Thank you. I would like to take one opportunity, I wasn't going to name her specifically, but since you guys did. Kelly Houston has done incredible work for the Internal Audit Department and really deserves to be commended for her extremely hard work. And really just keeping the department afloat over the last couple of years.
So Kendra, I'm here. So with that, what seems to be the struggle with hiring a new director? And also, are we conducting exit interviews when staff are leaving to find out? Because obviously, this is really detrimental to us that we have no one now in this department. So I just kind of would like to understand, you know, why we're having a hard time and, and what we can be doing better to, to get this handled.
Yeah, I'm not actually sure about exit interviews. I think that those would actually be performed by the Human Resources Department if they were done. So that may be a question more for Avril and the HR Director. My personal opinion, we've, we've gotten a limited number of candidates for the position. And many of them have external audit experience, maybe not necessarily government experience either. And internal audit is just a, it's a different type of environment. And so looking for someone with specifically internal audit and local government internal audit experience has been a significant challenge. We've heard in, from some other people in North Carolina or local governments that maybe the pay range is a little low, but that's all, I mean, that's not hard evidence. But we have had a limited number of applicants.
All right, is there, and is there anything else that the Audit Committee would, you know, suggest to the commission in terms of, you know, anything we could do to further support those efforts?
Yeah, I mean, I think the potentially looking into hiring a search firm may help us get a broader reach than we can currently get. It is a very specialized thing that we're trying to hire for. So maybe if we had someone with dedicated attention, that would help us especially move with speed, because that's important. But also, I want to make sure that we're not in our haste to fill the position, that we're not looking for someone who won't stick around here for a while.
Right.
Because it's, it's been very important that we have someone and have continuity, especially, they're going to be building a department from the bottom. So we want to make sure that we really get the right person in the position. And then, I think, just keep it on your, your minds that internal audit is an important, essential function. You all know the history of internal audit within our county. And moving it to be a completely independent department away from management was a huge step that was taken because it, it was not always that way. And it's, it's independent from management for a reason, to lend credibility to internal audit's work. And just keep that in mind as we continue to move forward.
Absolutely. Well, if there are other specific recommendations that the Audit Committee wants to make to the Commissioners about what's needed for this to be successful, I would just encourage y'all to bring this forward.
Yeah, our meeting is next week, on the 10th, and I imagine that we'll have some thoughts after that.
In saying that, next week meeting, we tried to change it, and I have got an engagement I can't get out of. So I think we could let another commissioner sit in.
Visitors are welcome, our, our meetings are public.
If someone would like to, we need it very bad. But if we go back to slide number eight, if you can pull it up, about the benchmarking, that's something that's really been overlooked here in the county. You look at all the other counties that, you know, the amount of staff that they got. Now, yes, they are a bigger county than us. Go back right there. We're at three, but we've been working with one for the last four months, isn't it, Al?
Since the beginning of July?
It's been a long.
Into July. And two for the last four years that I've been on the Audit Committee, so.
Yeah, and it says three staff, and that's because there was an additional position that's been authorized in 2022, which we had intended to hire kind of in January of 2022.
Yeah, anywhere.
We wanted to get through the audit management software implementation first so that a new staff auditor, because this is a pretty entry-level position that we're wanting to add. A new staff auditor wouldn't be learning manual processes that we're then going to immediately change. It just didn't make a lot of sense.
You know, looking at this benchmarking slide, I mean, if you just looked at this, it doesn't necessarily seem like we're in the wrong neighborhood. I mean, you know, Durham County's got three, much bigger county than Buncombe County, so similar, same number as them. Guilford and Wake have more, but of course, Wake's got a million people in it, so much bigger organization.
Oh yeah, it's much bigger than Wake.
It seemed like if we, if we were fully.
I think if we can get to the three to four range, we would be right in line. We have not made it to that point yet.
Right, understood, understood.
I would also note, I heard recently that the internal auditor from the City of Asheville recently left, and they actually, from what I've heard, have not yet decided whether or not they're going to fill that position or potentially outsource the function.
All right, Kendra, thank you so much for the presentation tonight and for your work on the committee. We really appreciate it.
It's a pleasure to serve on the committee and be able to share my expertise and to particularly work with Robert and Al. We've really gotten to know each other very well over the last few months.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is a public, we've got a public hearing and related to personnel ordinance updates. And it's like Rafael Baptista is here to talk to us about this, so thank you for being here.
Yeah, Commissioners, so thank you so much, Rafael Baptista with Strategy and Innovation. So before we open the public hearing, we wanted to give you a presentation related to the policies that are being removed from the Personnel Ordinance into standalone policies, and especially go into a deep dive with the Conflict of Interest policy that I know there have been questions around. So our policies are written by cross-departmental teams of employees. You can see here a list of employees who worked on this, on this policy. They put a lot of work over the last year and a half on this to make sure we bring a really well-polished policy to you all. So before we get started on the Conflict of Interest policy, I thought what might be helpful is think about what is being removed from the Personnel Ordinance, so we just can kind of track it. So if you think about the Personnel Ordinance and the proposed changes today, we're making some changes to cost of living adjustment, which we spoke about at the last briefing. We're moving Health and Human Services employees from the state personnel system to the county personnel system. And we're cleaning up the on-call language to allow us to pay employees to be on-call. But if you take those out, here are the other kind of moves being done within the Personnel Ordinance. So the first four moves all relate to conflict of interest. We're taking gifts and favors, conflict of interest, outside employment, and limitations on the employment of relatives, and then limitations on consensual relationships among employees. We're taking them out of the ordinance and putting them in a standalone Conflict of Interest policy. Additionally, we're taking IT acceptable usage and social media out of the Personnel Ordinance and putting into a standalone IT acceptable usage policy. We're taking vehicle usage out of the ordinance and making it into a standalone policy. Now I'll go into each of these policies in more in depth. So to give you an overview of the Conflict of Interest, we always think about what are the key factors or key considerations that we want to keep in mind as we go through and work on a policy. So in relationship to the Conflict of Interest, this is a policy that only applies to county employees. This policy does not apply to the Buncombe County Board of County Commissioners. This only applies to county employees. So the clear, the major considerations for us are, one, to take the definitions of the different types of conflicts are within the Personnel Ordinance and make them a little more clear. I was spending a good chunk of this afternoon really trying to help myself, make sure I fully understood every difference. And when I was thinking about what is the main difference, the one is, when I read the Personnel Ordinance, I'm, I'm a little confused as to what qualifies as a conflict. But I read the policy, it's very clear to me. It's very clear what is okay, what is not okay. And if there is a potential thing that's not okay, what are the steps that need to be taken? So there's a lot more clarity. The second is, it provides, as I said, it's that clear guidance on how to manage these things. When I presented to you all at the last briefing, I talked about wonderful goals with these changes is to make it where it's more clear to management and to employees of how we handle things. We're more transparent in the way we manage things, and this is the goal of the updated policy. Then lastly, it requires tracking of all real and potential conflicts. So the first time, we are actually saying that employees are proactively required to disclose any conflict they have every single year. So this allows for more robust tracking to ensure that we're catching things before they become a problem. So here are a couple of the key concepts within the Conflict of Interest policy. The first one is the general definition of a conflict of interest. What we're doing is we're providing a little more clarity. We're going from a small, one-paragraph statement to multiple paragraphs with a lot more definition. And what we speak to, one of the big changes is currently, we just say that a conflict is problematic and that you should disclose a conflict and not have one. Now what we're saying is there's different types of conflicts. Monetary, non-monetary, potential perception of a conflict, and how we handle those. With conflict tracking, as I mentioned earlier, for the first time, we are requiring that employees disclose any conflicts they have. In relationship to secondary employment, the Personnel Ordinance only states that if I want to take on outside employment of Buncombe County, I need to get approval from the Human Resources Department. It does not state why Human Resources would or not, would not approve my request for outside employment. With the new updated policy, it specifically states when conflicts exist with outside employment, and it gives grounds for which Human Resources may reject a request for outside employment. In relationship to employment, employment of relatives, this is one that does not have significant, much change to accept that currently, the Personnel Ordinance says that if the county manager were to want to hire a relative within their immediate family, they would require board approval. Now, under the updated policy, that would extend to first cousin or closer relative. So we're expanding the range of individuals for which the county manager would need approval from the board.
Can I ask one question about that, Rafael?
Yes, sir.
So for positions where the county manager would be making the hiring decision, I understand that. But I also assume that like for, for various positions lower in the organization, there'd be various kind of hiring decisions that are not considered to be decisions by the manager? Or do they all kind of ultimately flow up under that? So basically, that policy captures 100% of hiring decisions throughout the organization?
Yes, sir, it does. So any, any person who wanted to seek employment with Buncombe County that was a relative within the definition of a relative of the county manager would require approval of the Board of County Commissioners.
Even if it's, let's say, a fairly, you know, yeah, a position that the county manager wouldn't necessarily be, from a practical standpoint, very involved in that hiring process? But if, if it does involve that kind of relative, then it would be sent up to be kind of reviewed differently?
Correct. And then additionally, it, so the, it's not just that I supervise. So very clearly, you know, someone who's a relative of mine could not work in a role in which I supervise. But additionally, they cannot work in a role in which I manage responsibilities. For example, the Human Resources Director has disciplinary responsibilities, pay responsibilities, benefit responsibilities to touch every employee. So that would end up escalating up to the county manager in situations like that.
Okay, and then if that situation does occur, then it triggers the Board of Commissioners to need to, I'm sorry, what was the policy? What is actually, what actually happens?
The trigger for the board is for the county manager or any person who works for the board. Now, if we have another employee, let's say the Human Resources trigger, it would never trigger the board. It would trigger the county manager. So the board retains the approval over board-appointed positions. So anyone who reports to the board, that would trigger the board. But for anyone who reports under Avril's, the county manager's span of control, so any, essentially, any one of our 1500, 1200 employees outside of the sheriff's office and rest of the deeds, they would be approval from the county manager. County manager would approve employment of relatives there.
Okay, I understand. And is, and is any of that documented or disclosed in any way? I mean, I realize that there's personnel matters, so some of that might be proprietary, confidential. But is there any way that any of this gets kind of documented, out of curiosity in the process?
So the policy states that starting effective upon this, and once we get the system up and running in our, our ERP system, the system in which we manage all our personnel stuff, employees will have to disclose any employment of relatives. Additionally, when someone applies for a job, we do require that they disclose if they have any relatives that meet the definition of the policy who worked for Buncombe County. At that point, Human Resources works to manage that situation. So we do require, we do track it in our internal systems.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Don.
Additionally, when, with consensual relationship between employees, so two employees who enter into a relationship willingly and consensually with each other, the only change in the, from the ordinance to the policy here is that we state that not only do you have to disclose if there's an actual conflict, so two people who have supervisory or a conflict there, but if there's a potential conflict, they're required to disclose it to Human Resources. So there's a situation where maybe there's a conflict, someone could see a conflict, they're required to disclose it to Human Resources. So in relationship to the role of Board of County Commissioners, the first one is to adopt and review the policy, that a policy could only be changed by the board upon a vote of the board. And secondly, it's responsible for the oversight of board-appointed employees. So holding any employee who's under the purview of the board, they're, they're responsible to the board. And that doesn't change from the ordinance to the policy. So that's the, the remaining piece on Conflict of Interest. Are there any questions on that before I move on to the other policies?
You know, my, my only question, and this is just kind of like, you know, having been here for a while, is like, is there, I mean, I think the policies you described sound good. I just wonder if there's anything else that could be done to just further, kind of further strengthen them, honestly? In terms of like the nepotism policy? I mean, the kind of thing that I think about, and it's not, you know, like, I think everyone who's, does this work is great, but just thinking about long-term policies, like what, what within, what kind of structures within the organization would we want to have to assure long-term, you know, that nepotism is not tolerated in the organization? Because it has been abused in the past. I mean, it just, I mean, we have a history of this, right? That we all know painfully, are all painfully aware of. So just one of the things that, so I'm, I'm supportive of these, but I'm just kind of just thinking about what, you know, are there other things that could further enhance it? I mean, one of the things I would want, or maybe just to suggest to think about for, for this kind of policy would be, I mean, obvi, obviously, we want the management to be supportive of, you know, we hire based on merit and, and, you know, that's, that's what we're looking for, the best folks for the, to serve the public. But I would want any, you know, any employee in the organization to know, like, if they were ever in any way pressured to like make a hiring decision based on friends and family as opposed to merit, that, of course, that's not tolerated. And they should report, they should report that as, as outlined in the policy. But I, I mean, I would suggest maybe they need to not only do that, but if there's, if there's ever any pressure from anyone in the organization to do that, it should be, they should have an affirmative obligation to notify our internal audit folks because that is, you know, it's, it's, it's a violation of county policy. It violates our ethical standards as an organization. So we should not only, you know, not tolerate it, we should also not, we should let folks know that, that if they see it happening, it needs to be reported. Because I guess just, just thinking back on the county's past, like, if, I feel like if we had had more policies like that in the past, perhaps, you know, some of those things would have been caught sooner. So I'm just, I support these policies, but if there's anything we can do to further strengthen them and let our employees know that, that if you see things that don't, that are not consistent with this, there's an affirmative obligation to take steps, I'm certainly supportive of that. So anyway, thank you for, I don't have a question, I'm just sharing some, some thoughts. And if there's anything in here that contemplates those kind of scenarios more that I've missed, feel free to, you know, say more. Okay, go ahead.
It's not in the Conflict of Interest policy, but I want Rafael to speak to the fact that we are reviewing all policies. And we are looking at our hiring practices as well as recruitment. So those pieces we will touch as we go through this policy works, if you want to speak to the timelines and stuff that you're talking about.
Yes, so the remaining policies are within the Personnel Ordinance that we're going to look at include the recruitment and selection process. So that's going to explicitly touch the approach in which we take and how we make hiring decisions. So we'll make sure as we work through that policy to incorporate that feedback, Chairman.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right.
So there are three other policies that we are proposing removing from the Personnel Ordinance and making into standalone policies. A primary, a major difference between the Conflict of Interest and these policies is the conflict of interest is a personnel policy, it's a board-adopted, um, policy. These are all operational policies that would be, um, approved and managed at the management level. So, the first one is acceptable IT usage policy. This really speaks to the way that our county employees interact with our technology and with our server system and our internet system. So, it speaks to their day-to-day interactions with that, and what is permitted and what is not permitted. So, this is very much an operational policy. The second policy is vehicle usage. So, this is the way the county employees engage with county-owned rented or leased vehicles to conduct county business. So, can I use my cellphone while I'm driving a county vehicle? Answer being no, right? My obligations for proper maintenance and notification of fleet services if there's an issue with my vehicle. So, how I engage with the vehicles. The third one is inclement weather. So, currently, in the Personnel Ordinance, it states that the county manager has some authorities around closing government county offices if necessary due to adverse weather or natural disasters. But there's not a huge amount of clarity, there's not really clarity of what that is. So, we've been operating under kind of ad hoc policies and interpretations over the last few years. So, this policy will give us specific guidance of how we make the decision of when to close county offices. But I think also, more importantly, with the increases in technology over the last couple of years, and a significant amount of our workforce having a flexible working arrangement where they're in the office, sometimes not in the office every time, allows to ensure that our policies related to inclement weather are reflective of the current working conditions of more employees are able to work from home during adverse weather than ever before. So, those are the changes there. In terms of next steps, we would propose board adoption of the conflict of interest policy and implementation of the new policies and procedures would go with, uh, would be effective upon approval. So, we would go from the Personnel Ordinance, conflict of interest, to the standalone conflict of interest. The light would just, the switch would just happen, and there would be no period in which we would not have conflict of interest policy. Happy to take any questions.
I have just one other question. This comes up infrequently enough that I always forget how it works in between the coming up. In terms of inclement weather, so this would delegate, this would kind of create some more standardized protocols around that, it sounds like for the management to flesh out. But when it comes to the, um, Register of Deeds Office, that continues to be a place whereby state law, the commission has to make a decision to, uh, close operations for inclement weather or for other reasons too. So, we would continue to have to kind of coordinate on stepping in for that part of the county operations. But the idea would be to maybe sort of cover that in the plan? So, that it's sort of, like, when we do other things, it would be sort of a standard protocol to, to take as it, in that regard? Is that the thinking?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my memory is that, that like the commission has to approve the hours of operation. And so, unless there's some way that we can standardize, like it would automatically close under certain inclement weather conditions, which perhaps there is.
We will take a look at that. We enacted that with COVID when we were changing operations because of pandemic reasons. But we will go ahead and make sure that that protocol is in our procedures. And if we need to call and implement, we would make sure that's covered.
Okay, that's good. All right. Thank you, thank you, Raphael. Uh, any other questions from commissioners this time?
Thank you all.
So, commissioners, you do have to have a public hearing tonight?
All right, um, let's open the public hearing on these proposed changes at 6:02 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the proposed changes? Mr. Joyner, did anybody sign up to request speaking during these, during the hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:03 PM. And Kurt, uh, I'm, I'm just want to clarify, what's the recommended motion for the commissioners to consider on this item?
My recommend, my recommendation would be first, adopting the resolution regarding the HHS employees switching from the State Personnel Act to the county Personnel Ordinance. Second, I would recommend adopting the Personnel Ordinance Amendment. And then, third, I would recommend adopting the conflict of interest policy through a resolution.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the resolution on the HHS, uh, policies being the Buncombe County policies rather than default state policies?
So moved.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to adopt the Personnel Ordinance Amendments?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And finally, is there a motion to approve, to approve the conflict of interest resolution?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Raphael. We appreciate everyone's work on, um, these updates. Okay, Ms. Pender, do you have any items under the county manager's report?
Yes, sir, I do. I have three brief items. The first, tonight, I want to recognize Rachel Eden. She is our Equity, our Chief Equity and Human Rights Officer. So, her bio says that Rachel is an advocate, adv- advocate, activist, educator, and organizer, dedicated for promoting equity for honor-representing historically marginalized communities and individuals. She holds a BA in English and African-American Studies from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, a master's degree in public administration from East Tennessee State University. And she's currently pursuing a PhD in her education at the University of Massons, Boston, Massachusetts, Boston, where she researched, where her research interests include education and health policy and practice in rural communities of color in the American South, critical disability studies, Black feminism, and racism as a public health crisis. Rachel is a former Assistant Dean for Black Studies and First Generation and/or Low Income Students at Dartmouth College. And she trains students, faculty, staff, community members, and nonprofit leaders in issues of equity, community engagement, and social justice. So, I told I'm going to call her up and make her say something. And she said, I'm always ready.
Okay, all right. Rachel, come on up. Great to have you with us this evening.
Thank you, Avril, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, it's a pleasure to be here with everyone, finally. Um, after a long process, I'm very excited to return back to North Carolina. This is my home. I am not from Asheville, but I am so looking forward to making this my home. Um, over the past two days, I've been here with you. Um, I've had such warm, uh, support and welcoming, and also more encouraging, just the opportunity to hear from so many people that have already been engaged in this racial equity work and moving forward with the plans that Buncombe County has made so far. So, I feel delighted, I feel blessed, I feel a great measure of gratitude, and I'm very excited to be here. So, I look forward to addressing you all, um, in upcoming meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. We're so glad to have you on the team here.
Commissioners, the next update, I want to ask Chris Austin, our Safety Officer, to give a brief update on our Alertis. Plan that be me working on putting more hardware in our, in our buildings to make it safer. And so, Chris is going to give us a quick update.
Say, good afternoon, I'm Chris Austin. I am the County Safety Officer. After talking to Avril the other day, I was asked to give you guys a quick overview of exactly what Alertis was, just kind of that way everybody's on the same page with it, and then kind of real quick, go over kind of where we're at with it and, you know, what progress we've made with it. So, basically, Alertis is a mass notification system that the county has purchased to use. Here we go. Basically, it's a mass notification system that the county has purchased to use internally, uh, just for its employees. It is going to tie in with the Code Red system. So, if a situation does arise, it will automatically notify the public that, hey, a building's closing because of a fire, emergency situation, whatever that is, and, you know, kind of let them know that we'll be in disruption to service. Uh, but basically, the way the Alertis system works is it works as a dual-pronged approach. Uh, the first approach is it works through a hardware portion. Uh, part of the hardware is stuff like, uh, speakers. You guys may have noticed some out in the hallway to send emergency messages and different things to people that are out in the hallway and different things. Uh, and even things such as the message board, it's in the back of the room. Uh, the way that would work would be if something's happening outside here or down in the lobby, a member of staff can send a message, it'll pop up on the back screen and notify you guys that, hey, something's going on. You know, we need to exit the room or whatever it is that's going on. Uh, the other part of it is, is a software portion. IT's been working on this for close to a year and a half. Uh, we've come a really long way with it. And the way it works in general is, is if an alarm goes off through Alertis, it takes over your computer screen, um, it goes to your cellphone, that type of thing, and it lets you know that, hey, this is the scenario that's going on, and this is what you do, need to do to respond. Uh, we currently have it set up in three different alarm levels. Uh, the first one is just simply, I need a manager, just somebody to come down and help the situation. The next level is, is I need security at my location. And then the final level is active shooter, active assailant, something like that. So, part of this is we have already completed the first phase of the hardware equipment install. Uh, we do have everything on hand to start with Phase Two. I want to give just a second, give a shout out to Michael Maces' guys, because once they got started installing the first phase, they realized we can get this equipment ourselves and we can make this work. And they were actually able to go and buy the equipment for Phase Two and save us close to 30, 40, somewhere between $30,000 to $40,000. So, I mean, they have put the extra effort in to make sure that this is working as good as we can possibly do it, to make sure everything's right for everybody. The next thing is, is that after talking to IT, they are going to work to get it out to all county employees this week. They've been waiting on an internal, uh, information message to kind of go out to everybody and let everybody in the county know, hey, this is what's going on and what the difference is between Alertis and, uh, Code Red. But the main thing is, is that once it goes out to everybody, if something happens, all county employees will be able to receive a alarm or message saying, hey, there is a emergency situation going on at 200 College. Make sure you're not here, you know, if you're in the building, make sure you're taking appropriate action and doing what it is you need to do to make sure that you're able to go home safe at the end of the day. The Alertis training has already started. Um, we're hoping to have this done within the next six months. Uh, so far, staff that we've went over the training and stuff with, they seem to be really receptive of it, and they're really happy that we are taking this extra step and giving them the tools that they need to, you know, uh, and try to survive an emergency situation, essentially. And as sad as it is, you know, and I hate the idea that we actually have to worry about this nowadays, but it is, you know, it's part of a normal, everyday life anymore. We all the time hear about stuff happening. And, uh, everybody does seem to be real happy that we're able to give them this. And to be honest with you, the best thing that's come from this has not exactly been the training. It's been on the backside of it. Uh, the initial group we did the training with, they said, hey, come out here, come to our building, let's walk through. So, I was able to walk through some members of the Sheriff's Department and really give them some ideas and, you know, different things and some strategies to be able to help in an emergency situation. Do I have any questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. And the last update I want to offer is from Caroline Long. She is our HR recruiter, and she's going to share a little, a little bit about the upcoming job fair that we're working on.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So, Buncombe County is hosting a job fair for all of our positions. This is an internal Buncombe County job fair, not a community job fair, on Saturday, November 6th, at the Health and Human Services Building at 40 Cox Avenue, from 10 to 3. And we are hiring, it's a sort of an expedited process for our employees. So, we are trying to do sort of like mini-interviews onsite. We can't necessarily hire people on the spot, but we're going to have informational tables for all of our different departments to meet with interested candidates and discuss our open positions with them and different career opportunities that they can have at Buncombe County. For me, one of the largest pieces of this is informational and educational for our community members who may not know some of the services, of course, that Buncombe County offers, offers to them, but also some of the positions that we have available. And the example that I keep giving, uh, is the HVAC technician, which is about to be posted probably tomorrow. So, people may not think of Buncombe County as an employer that employs HVAC technicians. They think of other things. So, we have all kinds of openings across the board. And our department leaders from all of our departments will be there to discuss these openings with the candidates who show up and potentially give them that mini-interview onsite and/or notify them of upcoming vacancies that may be happening in the coming weeks, months, whenever that may be in terms of their succession planning. Of course, we're going to have accessible parking available and parking validation and, um, potentially some, uh, kid-friendly zones. So, not necessarily childcare, but we'll be welcoming people to bring their children with them and bring them along to their mini-interview and to walk through the, um, job fair with them when they, when they attend. And I have a list of a lot of different positions that we currently have open across the county. So, uh, all of these positions are currently hiring or in the process or about to be posted, in addition to some other ones who are, uh, that are actually not currently listed on here as well. So, we have things from IT to, like I said, HVAC technicians, to paramedics, to groundskeeping, almost any kind of career that you can think of Buncombe County is currently hiring for. And that is the end of the slide that I have. Do you all have any questions for me?
How many openings do we have now?
As of last week, we had approximately 70 openings. So, I know this looks like a lot. Some of them are multiple positions, multiple openings for the same position, multiple positions in terms of head count. It fluctuates as things are hired and posted on a daily basis, between 70 and 80 approximately.
All right, Caroline, thank you so much for the update.
Thank you. That is my report.
All right, thanks, Avril. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the discussion about the library facilities study status update. And Jim Blanton, the library director, is here to get us started on this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, just want to give you an update on where we stand with the facility study and the input process that we've been, um, doing since July. Uh, as you remember, in May, our consultant from the facility study, um, gave preliminary recommendations for, lost. Preliminary recommendations for, um, what our system structure should look like and also for the individual library locations. And at that point, uh, we moved forward with getting additional input from the community. The Library Advisory Board organized those sessions and held 10 sessions from July through September, which those included both in-person and virtual. But then, due to COVID, um, intensifying, we had to shift completely to virtual. And is the feeling of the Library Advisory Board, myself for sure, that, uh, we need to have those in-person sessions. That's what hindered us in the beginning of the process, uh, when we started the study, because we were scheduled to do community input sessions and focus groups and surveys. And because of COVID, we had to do that completely virtually. So, that was really a, you know, a focus for continuing the process. So, what we're looking to do now is get additional guidance on what we should do moving forward. We'd like to continue those sessions. We don't feel that, um, we should prioritize speed over making sure we get this right. And right now, we're on pause until the conditions merit going back to in-person sessions. The Advisory Board is set to discuss that again at their November meeting. But that's where we're at right now, we're on pause.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jim. So, I think, um, the commission should give some direction on this. So, I'll just kind of jump into it. I think the, um, I, you know, I think some of the proposals that have been put forward in the current library plan are just not supported in the community in terms of closing some of these community libraries. So, I think, um, I think we should give some predictability and clarity to the neighborhoods that have been really concerned about the potential closure of these libraries. So, for that reason, I'd like to make a motion that we give direction to the county manager as follows regarding the consideration of county library planning processes, that we would like to, um, give direction to maintain the county's current facilities, library facilities and presence, you know, in the existing libraries, including the Black Mountain Library, Swannanoa, Oakley, and Weaverville, to maintain the downtown library at its current location rather than constructing a new library at Cox, at Cox Avenue. That we want to encourage the exploration of opportunities to enhance That we want to encourage the exploration of opportunities to enhance, uh, the facilities and services at these locations. And that, but that also that while the direction is to focus in the near term on maintaining and improving the libraries in their current locations, the Commission is open to considering in the future, new library projects on a case-by-case basis. If, uh, on a case-by-case basis, if they have the support from when, within the neighborhoods that are served by the existing libraries. So I'd like to make that motion.
Back up.
Further discussion?
So, yes, I feel like we have clearly heard from the communities, and, and I, I think it's really important that they are more involved in the process, and I know you all are trying to do that, but it, it seemed clear to me that that wasn't effective on the front end, and, and we need to go ahead and instead of drawing this process out any longer, is let them have some understanding of where we are. Uh, and it, it is clear that the libraries have so much meaning to our community, and I specifically heard from Oakley, it really struck me how many people said, and actually some of them were children, about how safe they felt in their library and how connected they felt to their library. And, uh, so I'm, I'm very supportive of this motion to go ahead and just let our communities have, have some clarity on where we stand with this.
Jessica?
Absolutely echo that, I want to just take a moment to acknowledge and thank the folks who came this evening, and we have, um, I think each of us gotten hundreds of messages, some of them, um, so personal and poignant, uh, about the power of, of libraries in our community, if we weren't believers before this, I think we all were, um, we certainly would be now. Um, I, one thing I just do want to elevate is that, in some of the discussions we've had at this level, um, some questions, I believe, around accessibility and ADA issues have come up, um, and I'd like to make sure we really elevate that and, and think about ways to prioritize addressing those, um, as well as, of course, any safety issues that we should be aware of. Um, that feels like a different category of urgency that we want to make sure that we're addressing.
And one thing I would like to add, I think it would be, I'd really like for county management to go ahead and maybe reach out to say, because Oakley, I believe, is a city-owned facility, and Black Mountain is a, um, Black Mountain-owned facility, I think it'd be really good for us to reach out and start looking at how we can make some improvements to those facilities as well, so we need to learn more about that.
I'd like to add just a couple of things, I know when this was first presented to us, there were a lot of really, I think, unique and creative ideas for our libraries that I personally was really excited about, um, after hearing from so many residents across Buncombe County about how closely tied they are to the particular library in their community, Oakley, Weaverville, Black Mountain. Um, it certainly shifted some of my own personal excitement, I do hope as we move forward, um, we can look at ways we can update existing, uh, facilities to incorporate modernizing what we can offer in the facilities that we do currently have. So I hope that there is a way that we can compromise, um, and still offer residents of Buncombe County a really exciting, modern amenities in the library. And I also really want to acknowledge, um, two of our speakers this evening who have spent a lot of time reaching out to me as well, and sharing their own personal stories, but I specifically want to note that they have really elevated the issue of equity in terms of our library to, I think, of the forefront of the conversation, and how many folks, particularly in library, in Oakley, are assessing the library there, and I think that's really important as we move forward, with that we are keeping equity at the forefront of this conversation, too.
You know, I was riding through Oakley with my 10th grade grandson, and he sort of brought it all home to me when he said, "Granddad, who are the idiots that are proposing we close the library?" And I, I didn't have the nerve to tell him, you know. But I think through this process, we found out from the public, and that's the way it should work, you know, we, I still think we had some good ideas, what we're looking at, and we need to continue to do that. But also, the public told, we heard loud and clear how important it is to have our community libraries in Buncombe County, and that's something that, uh, I thank our constituents for, the citizens, because that's what we're here for, to listen. And I think the process is working, but I agree, we have some work to do, especially to make them accessible to everybody and all, we got our work cut out for us, but we will get there.
Absolutely, and I'll, I'll just say a few, if I could, a few things. Um, one, um, you know, the consultant looked at data and numbers, and what, what gets lost in that is the intangible quality of the libraries and what they really mean to people, it's just numbers on paper, and that, that doesn't translate when you're talking about what that means when you take library service out of a community. Uh, but what it did do for us, um, in addition to giving us a general, uh, snapshot of what the facility conditions are, which we knew to some extent, but certainly did a deeper dive on, in the front end of that, to what you're talking about, uh, in terms of folks' reaction to how accessible these buildings are and what their conditions are, they mean so much to so many folks, and, you know, we really need to invest in them and make sure they're, they're up to par. Um, another thing I would say, too, about the equity piece, too, just to let you know, that's something that's very much on the forefront of our minds as well. One thing we also heard through these feedback sessions, which I think was super important, particularly from the Oakley community, they highlighted the fact that the Oakley Library is the library that is, um, used by Shiloh, it's the closest to Shiloh. Uh, what we don't know, though, is, is that enough? Is that, is that really serving, uh, that community in the way we need to be serving that community? Uh, one thing that we pursued, um, recently is, um, an opportunity through the State Library to obtain this data analysis product called Gale Analytics, which we hope will allow us to do a deeper dive to understand, um, how the, the Shiloh neighborhood is being served, to understand if it's adequate in the way we're serving it right now, and do we do, need to do something different that this study didn't capture at all, which is, which is very possible, so, uh, we're, that's definitely on our minds, for sure, to make sure we look at that piece, too, continuing.
Any other comments from the board? Um, you know, and just the only thing coming out, it's like, you know, I, I do think the, um, you know, we, we hear all this attachment to the facilities and, you know, um, the facilities' locations in a lot of ways work really well for, uh, a lot of folks, but, um, you know, I think we do need to bring an open mind to the idea that, you know, in the future, you know, there might be other opportunities that are gonna be even better for the neighborhoods that, uh, are served by libraries. I think the, uh, you know, the East Asheville Library Process was an example where, you know, in that project, it was definitely the community saying, you know, we've loved this library, but it's, we have outgrown it, you know, for a long time, and, and they, and they really kind of pushed us to actually, you know, actively explore other possible locations to put that, and, um, but ultimately came back around to the idea that actually the current location was really the best location, even though it's, it's a tight lot and it's co-owned with the city, so you kind of, it makes it a little more complicated, but just for a number of reasons that, after looking at different locations with a really open mind, they, you know, there was kind of this consensus that emerged that, let's keep it where it is, and, um, and we have this beautiful new library there that everyone's so excited about, so, but I think it's an example of where, of what, you know, kind of how that exploration process could look, you know, I think about, um, I think about West Asheville, such a fast-growing area, you know, people love the library there, too, but it's, um, it's also, you know, very fast-growing part of the community, and in the long term, you know, there, perhaps in the heart of West Asheville, there are other possibilities that would even better serve the community in the long term, so I think we're, you know, we should bring it up in mind to, to all that, while also hearing, like, in the short term, we want to let folks know that the services you have and the facilities you have, uh, we want to keep that and, and build, and build on it. So, um, if there are no other comments, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you, Jim. The, um, next item on the agenda, we go to new business, is the resolution for appointing the tax assessor, and Keith Miller, the tax assessor, is here to get us started on this item.
As Keith is making his way up, sir, I would start this item by saying, the tax collector and the tax assessor's position, while they are administratively responsible to the county manager, they are appointed by the Board of Commissioners, so on a daily basis, Keith and Jennifer, who will be next, do report to the, um, Assistant County Manager and to the Finance Officer, you must appoint them by statute, and that's why they're here tonight, so I'll let Keith open by saying whatever.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, uh, just to follow up a little bit more, what Avril has said to you is that, um, all 100 counties in the state of North Carolina must by statute, 105294, appoint a tax assessor. Um, in November 2017, you appointed me as your tax assessor, and I've served in that position since, but that term now is expiring. Um, the term can only be, uh, up to four years. So the resolution that's, uh, with you tonight is asking you, once again, to appoint me as your tax assessor for another four years, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions or have any discussion around that that you would like.
Thanks, Keith. Commissioners, any questions or is there a motion?
Motion to reappoint Keith Miller as tax assessor.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. That was easy, thanks, Keith. And now we also have the tax collector resolution, and Jennifer Pike is here on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, so what you hear me say will sound very similar to, to what you've heard. I am with you this evening to request reappointment of the Buncombe County Tax Collector. I was also appointed in November of 2017, so my term is also expiring. So I'm requesting reappointment, same four-year term, uh, to expire in November of 2025, and I would also be happy to answer any questions you have or, or anything you'd like to discuss.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there a motion?
I move to approve reappointment of Jennifer Pike.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second to reappoint Jennifer Pike as tax collector for, for your term, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Jennifer, Keith, uh, thank you both for your service to the people of Buncombe County, we really appreciate it, and we're glad to have you re-upped.
My pleasure.
All right, the next item is a review of a power purchase agreement with Duke Energy, and Kristy Smith, the Solid Waste Manager for the county, will present this item.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks for the time. Again, we get to see this lovely diagram of what we're doing out at the landfill, I'm here to present on the landfill gas-to-energy update. We have a bunch of, uh, vertical wells out in the landfill, they actively collect landfill gas, they direct it to our generator, which then combust that gas, turns it into electricity, goes onto Duke's power lines, and we're able to power around 1,100 homes throughout the community. Benefits of the landfill gas-to-energy program are significant reductions of greenhouse gases, methane is a potent greenhouse gas, our landfill gas collection system actively collects that and combusts it in either the flare or the generator. Landfill gas can be used in the generator to produce renewable electricity. Duke is obligated to purchase renewable electricity if we produce it, which was a question last time, wanted to make sure to answer for you, and then, um, Duke's power purchase agreement would allow us to continue producing renewable electricity out of the landfill. I brought three scenarios to you this evening, there's a flare-only scenario, which takes the generator offline, and then scenarios two and three are keeping the generator online. Scenario two is a one-year pricing with Duke, and, uh, the scenario three is the three-year pricing structure with Duke. So I'll run through those for you, flare, uh, sorry, flare one. Scenario one is the flare-only, uh, so we have reduced the expenditures there to accommodate for estimated staff time and taking the generator offline, um, and then the revenues there would only be from carbon credits. We recently sold a year's worth of carbon credits for $124,000 a year, we made that assumption moving forward in these, um, scenarios.
And you get that just by, by flaring the methane, there's a credit for that activity as opposed to sort of not doing that?
Yes, sir, so the, the meth, the methane is still combusted, so we are able to get a carbon credit for that, because we reduced that greenhouse gas.
Understood, thanks.
Scenario two is, uh, keeping the generator online with a one-year power purchase agreement with Duke, they would give us 3.1 cents per kilowatt hour, so the revenue there is the 3.1 cents, the $124,000 a year carbon credits, and then also $4 per megawatt for the renewable energy credits that we are, um, allowed to get with the generator. And then the third scenario is the three-year PPA pricing, which is the 3.3 cents per kilowatt hour, that's really the only difference between the scenarios, uh, two and three, is that increased power production, uh, rate. Uh, the expenses, I did not highlight for you, that is with the generator online and estimated staff time, scenarios two and three expenses are the same. And then just some long-term financial considerations for the project for you, right now, we are under a service agreement contract for the generator, that doesn't sunset until 60,000 hours, which is, in calendar years, we estimate July of 2024. At that time, the, uh, manufacturer recommends we do a, a major overhaul, which is a, an engine block replacement, you can see in the picture there. Again, that's approximate timeline of July 2024, with a cost currently estimated $567,000. So that engine you see is like a big, huge car engine, and it's 10 years old now, it will be 13 years old, so, you know, we're running a car on 200,000 miles, and, uh, it's gonna start getting expensive to repair and fix, and we may look, um, down the road at how much money we want to put in our old car, so to speak. Uh, we also have the annual $75,000 loan repayment when we started the project, that's 75,000 per year through 2032, so we'd like to analyze the long-term financial impacts and come back to the board in 2023 with another recommendation at that time. And then just a timeline for all these moving parts, we've got the loan till 2032, generator contract at 60,000 hours, roughly July 2024, three-year PPA, uh, which would expire October, sorry, November of 2024, and then during that three-year period, we'll need to install some additional gas wells in the landfill, we'll need to fix a few of the old ones, because they're getting old, too, and then we hope to evaluate what kind of gas production we've got at that time, there certainly will be more, we don't know how much more, so we want to evaluate that and bring that back to you, uh, before the large capital maintenance requirement on the generator itself. So the staff recommendation would be the three-year PPA pricing, it's the least expensive option, we can continue producing renewable electricity, uh, we can evaluate some other beneficial uses of gas in the meantime, and come back to you in 2023 with what we find during that time. And for me, I think that's it. Happy to ask any questions. No, answer questions, not ask, sorry.
All right, thanks, Christine. Commissioners, is there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the three-year power purchase agreement.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, great. Look forward to getting further updates on this a little bit down the road. Okay, um, next item is consideration of budget amendment for positions and funding for emergency services response, and Jennifer Barnett, actually Rafael Batista, is back to talk with us further about this item.
So it'll be both of us tonight, so, um, I'm here just to see if there are any questions and answer any questions, and then Jennifer will take on the budget amendment, so, just wanted to see if y'all had any questions related to this item first.
Not yet.
All right, I'll pass it over to Jennifer, then.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I have, I have a few papers in front of me, so I apologize. So our first request is related to, um, a general fund budget amendment. As discussed at the October 19th Commissioner briefing, and as you heard from Emergency Services Director Taylor Jones... Services Director Taylor Jones and other EMS personnel, Emergency Services is struggling to meet the demands of significantly increased call volume. In an effort to support this need, the first request before you today is a budget amendment for the purchase of two quick-response vehicles, the associated equipment for those vehicles, as well as additional equipment to stock spare ambulances. These funds we were requesting from appropriated fund balance and totaling $360,000. The second request before you is to establish 18 new paramedic positions so that EMS can adequately staff these quick-response vehicles and ambulances. We are projecting to be able to cover for the remainder of the current fiscal year cycle the associated salary and benefits for these positions utilizing lapsed salary as well as the other proposed on-call and shift differential costs as outlined on October 19th, also from lapsed salary. So the dollar amount associated in our request this evening is for the one-time capital, $360,000, with an appropriation from fund balance, and then again, the 18 paramedic positions. Happy to take any questions.
Jennifer, so I understand for the remainder of the fiscal year, that's how we can cover this, but could you just say a little bit about kind of longer-term, the financial investment needed to sustain, you know, these positions on a going-forward basis, like for a full year?
Sure. So I wanted to pull up the slide, so from the October 19th briefing. The information that was outlined for the staffing costs, so for those EMS additional positions, that annual estimated total is $1,748,714, with a caveat that future years obviously have some varying associated costs in the future just based on changing position-related costs.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, or is there a motion regarding the proposed budget amendment?
I move to approve the proposed budget amendment.
Second.
Okay, and just to make sure we get, do we need a motion to approve the budget amendment and to approve the positions? Let's first just approve the budget amendment, and then we can have a separate motion to approve the positions. All right, so there's a motion and second to approve the budget amendment. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the 18 additional regular paramedic positions?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, well, we appreciate bringing this forward. We appreciate all the folks who came out this evening to express their perspective on this. This is a core county service. We appreciate everyone who helps make this happen every day, especially over the past year and a half, two years, where we've worked in unusual circumstances, and you all have been a key part of helping our community get through it. So thank you for your service, and keep us posted as we work to recruit for these important positions. Thank you. All right, the next item, and Jennifer is going to stay with us, to talk about the proposed budget amendments for school capital fund commission recommendations for the 2023 school projects.
So this is a request for a budget amendment to our public school capital needs fund. This is an annual process. So at the October 11th, 2021, School Capital Fund Commission meeting, the commission approved for recommendation to you all as a board, $21,998,175 for new projects for the next funding cycle of the commission, the School Capital Fund Commission. $7,502,175 is recommended for Asheville City Schools, and $14,496,000 is recommended for Buncombe County Schools. The project list is attached in the outlined budget ordinance. And Buncombe County will issue debt and will pay for the debt service using Article 39 sales tax as designated for the School Capital Fund Commission per statute.
Thanks, Jennifer. Commissioners, are there any questions about the proposed budget amendment for school capital fund projects? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve $21,998,175 for the Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County School capital projects. And I'll just make a brief comment before we vote. You know, we've got, I think, a really good process to evaluate these projects. We've got a school capital fund committee that includes representatives from the Asheville City Schools, the Buncombe County Schools, and the County Commission to look at all these school capital needs throughout the community and to rank them and prioritize them. And this is a lot of taxpayer funding that we're talking about here, of course, almost $22 million. But I just really appreciate the work that the schools put into thinking, you know, thinking ahead and thinking really systematically about how to take care of these really important community assets. And these are all great projects, and there's a long list of other high priorities after them. So, but we're fortunate to have a dedicated funding source to help take care of these projects in Buncombe County. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right, we now come to the next item on the agenda, which is a discussion about consideration of a feasibility study from the Trust for Public Lands. And let me pull this item up. And just as a little bit of background on this item, so, you know, over the last several months, actually, I guess dating back probably over six to nine months now, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee of the County Commission has been talking about setting goals related to affordable housing in the community. And our staff have done a great job helping kind of bring in different ideas and analysis around, you know, looking at what other cities and counties across North Carolina are doing, in particular in North Carolina. We've also looked at some communities outside North Carolina as well. But, you know, many communities in particular that are experiencing a lot of growth, like we are not alone in the challenge of affordable housing that we are facing. I mean, most cities across the country that are experiencing a lot of growth, this is a phenomenon that cities and their surrounding communities are facing across the country. And so we looked at what's, you know, what is Mecklenburg County doing? What is Durham County doing? What's Guilford County doing and others? And, you know, what we found is that a lot of communities in North Carolina and elsewhere on the country have really stepped up their investments to address affordable housing. I think, you know, if you look back five years ago, the amount of investment that was going into affordable housing in Asheville and Buncombe County was actually only on a per capita basis was the highest in the state. But that's really not the case anymore. Other communities are really investing a lot more and have developed some really innovative and scalable and effective strategies to really dramatically increase the amount of affordable housing and workforce housing that's being developed in their communities. So we've been, we've been learning more about what some of those programs, how they're, you know, how they're operated, and the goals that they've set, and the goals that they're achieving. And we've been impressed by some of the examples from our peers around the state. We've also asked our finance staff to advise us around, well, how can communities approach making these kinds of investments? Buncombe County invests, as we all know, in our, out of our general fund, we invest several million dollars every year into our Affordable Housing Services Fund, and we see tremendous benefits from that. We see the home repair program that helps many, many families be able to stay, keep family members in their homes safely. We help support the construction of new affordable housing every year, both homeownership through, like Habitat for Humanity partnerships, as well as multifamily developments. But part of what I think sort of impressed the Affordable Housing Subcommittee as we looked at this is that for some of the programs that would really allow us to scale up affordable housing development in Buncombe County, really, they would most likely require debt financing for them and likely require voter approval to invest in those projects. The county has, you know, we are fortunate that we have the highest credit rating possible, local governments, we have AAA credit rating, so we're able to access capital very inexpensively. So for example, and that $22 million of school capital funding that we just approved, we're able to access very inexpensive debt for building new schools or for repairing our schools. When we invested in the Renewable Energy Project last year, we got very inexpensive capital to do that, because of the county's AAA credit rating. But when we think about affordable housing, the county can't use the same, just internally approved mechanisms to fund future investments in affordable housing for reasons that Don Warren would be able to give a much more sophisticated explanation of than I can. But it has to do with the kinds of, you know, real estate and assets the county owns. We don't, we're not in the business of owning affordable housing. And so unlike, we own schools, and our school partners own schools, so we're able to use them to invest in future projects. But that's not the case with affordable housing. So anyway, this is a long way of saying, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee has become interested, based on this research, on the idea of exploring, if we want to invest more in affordable housing, would it make sense to consider public bond referendums as a mechanism to invest in this in the future? Of course, if we did, and we determined that they were feasible, part of that would be determining whether the public would be interested in supporting that, too. So kind of coincidentally, with those conversations at the Affordable Housing Subcommittee level, the county was also approached by an organization called Trust for Public Land, which is also, which is primarily, his mission is primarily focused on working with communities that want to invest more in investing in land and water conservation in their communities, and public parks, and greenways, and other outdoor, outdoor assets. And they let us know that they've received some funding to work with communities that are interested in exploring feasibility for expanded land conservation and public lands protection as well, and wanted to know if Buncombe County would be interested in exploring the feasibility of that within our community. And if so, then they are willing to, as an organization, at no cost to the communities they work with, kind of carry out a feasibility study for that purpose. So in some of those informal conversations that some commissioners have had with them, I think it was expressed that, yeah, of course, environmental protection, land protection, parks and greenways, these are all things that our constituents are very interested in, in Buncombe County, but we also face a huge affordable housing need in the community. So we were going to explore those kinds of possibilities. We would also be interested in looking at affordable housing, not just, you know, environmental preservation needs. So anyway, that's kind of the context of what kind of brought us to having this item on the agenda this evening. The Affordable Housing Committee has issued a recommendation in support of kind of doing a feasibility process with Trust for Public Land. Our Energy and Environment Committee also supported, supports the idea because it does include a potential public lands protection or public lands acquisition piece as well. So I would just share that as context. Commissioner Wells has been involved in some of these conversations with Trust for Public Lands, too, so would you like to share any comments as well?
Yes, thank you. I think the, when we think about sustainable communities, we know we need good jobs, adequate housing, and communities that have a strong sense of place with their natural and cultural resources. And so I find that conservation and affordable housing is something that is compatible. Often, I think people think of them as two completely separate things, but I really think going poor, we have to think of them as very, they're not, it's not a choice of one or the other. We can, we can do both, and I think that's very important for our community. And so I think this is a great opportunity to look at this feasibility of, and get the sense of, you know, what are our options with this, and how does the community feel about it? Are they supportive of this? And just for the specifics, Commissioner Newn spoke so eloquently about the affordable housing piece. I'll speak some about the green infrastructure piece, because I think this is really an important tool to also address the climate crisis, which is one reason that our Environmental Committee was really supportive of this. Because when you look at, specifically around, when we think about public asset access and green trails, that type of thing, we think about providing carbon-free transportation, linking residents to popular destinations and each other. And we've certainly been hearing from the community lately how much that they're supportive of this. We think about those shady green spaces that reduce the heat island effect, protecting people from heat waves and reducing summer energy use, also absorbing stormwater and managing intense rainfall. And also, when you think about planning for higher river storm surges, as we have recently seen, with those natural buffers and green space to reduce the flooding for homes and businesses. So these and many more reasons, such as because they also boost public health and reduce health disparities, strengthen social bonds, economic vibrancy, and outdoor education. So green infrastructure does all of these things, which I think is really vital for our community. So I'm really interested to see, pursuing this feasibility and seeing what comes out of it.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions about the idea? At this point, let me just maybe one more comment. If we do approve this letter, this does not commit the county to any particular course of action. The Trust for Public Land essentially asked, if the county is interested in this, they would want the commission to sign a letter basically acknowledging, hey, we're going to go through this feasibility process together. This is, they would be spending their staff time on this and energy, so while there's no commitment involved, they do at least want to know that this is a topic that the elected officials are interested in enough that they don't go spend, you know, three or four months of their time, only to later find out, oh, you know, this was just Brownie and Terry's, like fanciful, you know, polite conversation one afternoon. They want to know that the community is sincerely interested in exploring this information and will listen to the results and consider it. But, but it by no means commits the county to any particular course of action. And for that reason, I'm supportive of it, because I think regardless of what we do or don't do, I think we will learn a lot through this process about kind of the technical feasibility of different financing mechanisms for land and housing, and the, you know, community feedback on these different ideas as well. And I think it'll also foster some more, you know, at upcoming meetings, we're going to be talking more about some of these specific affordable housing goals, for example. I think it can kind of help focus some of our thinking around, what are we really trying to accomplish over the next, you know, the next few years in that space in particular? So are there any questions or further discussion?
Commissioners, I do want to remind you that Parker wanted to make sure that, into the letter, that we would add affordable housing, because it's not specifically called out. So that's the only amendment to the letter.
Agreed. It talks about related priorities, but considering the significance of housing in the community, we wanted to specifically, you know, state that that's part of the feasibility, is looking at affordable housing goals in the community.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter with the addition of affordable housing included in the letter.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Commissioners, thank you very much for your consideration on that item. We now come to the Board Appointments List. And as we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, actually, let's, we'll take, we'll take up the resolution second, because we can do the strategic part, let's do the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee first. We interviewed a number of really great applicants for this committee. We have one opening on this committee at this time. So why don't we just go around and let's just all identify the candidate that we would prefer, and if one of them clearly has a majority or strong support, then we'll go with that. Although, actually, I mean, I'm just thinking about process here for a second. Do we, we don't necessarily have detailed written rules around this, because it's kind of informal, but just to maybe kind of anticipate a scenario, if someone has the most support but doesn't have a majority, I'm not sure we've dealt with that specific scenario before, but I feel like we should probably have a majority of the board supporting an appointment for this.
Right.
Why don't we go through, why don't we just kind of, everyone identify your personal one? If someone doesn't get a majority, then what we'll do is we'll nail, we'll go back and we'll re-vote on the top two so that someone gets a majority support. All right, Commissioner Edwards, we'll start over on your side.
Tara Schultz.
Oh, it's me. Ah, Grant.
Doing my best here.
Ray Himachandra. Tara Schultz.
Okay. So Tara Schultz and Ray Hermunch, sorry, I'm just so tired here, Himachandra got the highest number. Let's go back and, because neither of them got a majority. Let's go back and let's do it one more time with just those two applicants. So we'll start on your side, Robert.
Tara Schultz.
Ray.
Ray.
We need Parker. We're tied. We're tied up again. They're both excellent candidates, so we are tied. Unless someone is willing to, well, and Parker wasn't in the interview, but he might end up being a tiebreaker anyway. We do need some process to break the tie. I don't know if, is anybody interested in adjusting their position on it?
They're very, very compelling.
They are, but they're one of the two.
Chairman, I know I might have missed it after we talked about Tara, who would be my pick, but was there any conflict with her, her today?
So Tara works for the Community Foundation, right?
Yeah.
And was the music group, but they withdrew.
Okay, that is, thank you for.
It was flagged, yeah.
They withdrew their application.
They withdrew. If she, if she were to be appointed, the music group would not be eligible to apply again. I don't know if I.
As long as she stays on the board.
As long as she's on the board, they would not be able to apply. I don't know if they're all, Lamar, do you know if they're aware of that, that that would exclude that group from participating in the future? Okay.
Well, so could we go back to Rachel with that information and see if that has an impact on Tara wanting to be on the board?
That's a great point, and she could potentially choose to step down from her board service in order to serve in this capacity, too, so.
Yeah.
Okay, let's let Tara know about that. If nobody wants to change their position, it's totally fine. We'll just need to vote on this again at the next meeting. I know Parker wasn't able to be in the interviews, but he'll probably, we'll just need to re-vote on that at the next meeting, because we've got a tie at this point. All right, let's go on to the ad hoc reappraisal committee. I'd like to make a motion to amend the number of members to the ad hoc reappraisal committee. I think everyone has a hard copy of that resolution in front of you. This basically adds one additional, it changes the number of ad hoc committee members from three to four. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, so with that adopted, first, let's, one of the positions is for a real estate position, I hope we don't have another tie. And there's two, there's two applicants who meet the real estate criteria, Brooks Johnston and Jonathan Hunter. So let's go ahead and do that one first, get that one out of the way. Amanda, can we start on your side, and would you indicate if you prefer Brooks Johnston or Jonathan Hunter?
Jonathan Hunter.
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 Jonathan Hunter.
Okay, both great applicants. We appreciate you both applying. So Jonathan Hunter gets the real estate position, and now we've got the ability to appoint four members to the at-large positions. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Bobette Mays, Dewayne McCaffey, Melanie Petrollo, and Ori Barber.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And again, we had so many great applicants for this committee, we really couldn't have gone wrong if we just picked names out of a hat, honestly. They were really, really good. So thank you all for your interest in serving on this board. Got an announcement to make. On November 16th at 3:00 PM, the county, yep. Okay. Oh, thank you. Thanks for being able to straight here. All right, the Homeless Advisory Committee.
I'd like to move that we appoint Lance Crawford and reappoint Jennifer Teague and Tamea Jones.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The African-American Heritage Commission.
I recommend that we have, I'm trying to think, oh, it's three reappointments. If we reappoint Erin Griffin, Senior, Lynn Smith, and Catherine Mitchell.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? County Board of Adjustments, one reappointment.
I move that we re, second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And finally, Historic Resources Commission.
I move that we reappoint Gil Lazarus.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Sorry about not flipping the page over. Now, we've got a couple of announcements, unless there's anything else on boards and commissions, I don't think so. On November 16th at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. On November 16th at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for a closed session this evening. Mr. Euler, could you explain the purpose?
We need a motion to go into a closed session for the following reason, to consult with an attorney employed by the county about matters with respect which the attorney-client privilege between the county and their attorney must be preserved, including potential litigation involving the county. The statutory authorization contained in North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3. And no action will be needed to be taken after the closed session.
Consider motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're in closed session.